All right, it is six o'clock, so good evening. And I'm going to call to order the January 14th, 2020, meeting of the Bristol, Virginia City Council. Please join me in a moment of silence. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
(inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, well, good evening. I'm glad to see a good crowd here. We've got a few good things on the agenda, some proclamations we're going to deal with, and some discussions we're going to have. Before we do that, I've got a couple of comments I'm going to talk about. Yesterday, we held a joint meeting with the Bristol, Tennessee City Council to discuss how to determine how we're going to fund outside agencies like the CVP, CVB, and Believe in Bristol, and the Country Music Museum. I think it was a good discussion that we had, and as I said yesterday, it was more of a starting point than an ending point. So, we're going to have continuing discussions on how to go forward and how to determine how to fund these agencies in a fair way that's responsible to our taxpayers and responsible to, you know, to our budget. I would also like to commend the Public Works and our emergency safety folks for what they did during the storm and aftermath from the storm, as well as BBU for helping us get some trees off power lines and get power back. I know it was out quite a while for some folks, so I'm glad it's basically back on now and we've basically got everything cleaned up. The other thing that I wanted to mention, on January the 20th, we have some events going on downtown for Martin Luther King Day. Everybody, I think, is going to meet at 1:30, if I believe, at the Paramount and begin a march to the train station. It'll be a program. And they've got some good stuff planned, so I hope everybody's able to make it out for that also, and I think there might be some refreshments once you get to the train station, so please come out for that. Does anyone have any other comments from up here?
Well, you just said it too, but a thank you to, you know, we had a big storm Saturday night. A thank you to city manager, our Public Works folks, and BBU all together, their coordination. Someone from BBU told me they had, like, quite a few areas. I don't remember the exact number, but it was more than 65 areas that had issues, different power lines, different poles, and it took a little while, but it was just so great and it was so spread out. So, thank you to them for helping get everyone back in service and everything back to normal for the most part so far.
All right. City manager, oh, go ahead.
One thing before we meet again, just to remind people, a few weeks ago, we had a joint meeting with the Planning Commission going over the zoning maps, and we scheduled a zoning open house on Thursday, the 23rd. Two of them, one from 11:00 to 1:00, and another one in the evening from 5:00 to 7:00. So, hopefully, people can come out and look at that and make some comments. You know, I know the Planning Commission has spent quite a bit of time going over that, and we did some with them, but they have spent a lot of time and effort, so hopefully we can get some feedback from the community.
All right, thank you. Mr. City Manager.
I want to take a few minutes and say thank you to everyone who assisted in the storm we had in Bristol on Saturday night. First, I want to thank the citizens of Bristol for being understanding as our Public Works crews worked Saturday night and all day Sunday to clear debris from the storm and get roads open as quickly as possible. We're still working on Old Avenue and Highway, and I anticipate Old Avenue and Highway to be fully reopened by late tomorrow afternoon. Second, the city's Public Works Department, thanks to Wallace McCulloch and his team, they did an outstanding job removing trees, brush, and other debris from city roads and right-ofways, so first responders and electrical crews could gain access to areas where electrical pairs were needed. Third, the city's police and fire departments responded quickly with professionalism to citizens that either had medical or law enforcement issues during this time period. Without hesitation, several firefighters and police officers came in to assist their comrades during this emergency situation, and their help was greatly appreciated by everyone. Finally, but definitely not least, the city's dispatchers worked tirelessly as citizens were calling in and reporting issues across the city. Two dispatchers handled hundreds of calls on Saturday evening and were able to prioritize where help was needed and get the right personnel on scene to assist quickly. Their professionalism during this high-pressure situation is to be commended, so my hats go off to those folks. Being in that dispatch room during that time period really opens your eyes to the type of pressure that they are under when something bad happens. So, thanks to everyone who was able to assist on Saturday night. We understand that there's always room for improvement. We've had a debrief on Monday morning of what we can do better, and we will continue to improve as we move forward. Thank you.
All right. Item C is matters to be presented by members of the public non-agenda items. We have one sign up, and that is Ms. Marnie.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, my name is Nancy Marnie. I'm a resident of the city of Bristol, Virginia. I'm a property owner. I'm a taxpayer. Albert Einstein made this statement, "There is no cure for stupidity." There is no cure for stupidity. I will add to that, to go side by side, my own statement, which is, "Do not keep digging the hole deeper to get out of it." I'm speaking primarily in reference tonight to the requests by the nonprofit organizations for money. Now, I am in approximately the 40th year of listening to all of this. I'm not the new kid on the block. Gentlemen, this city is still, as you know, in terrifically difficult financial straits. Our chief financial officer has all of the figures right here in her office. Anyone who wants to question them may talk with her and get straightened out pretty I would remind you all of something I've said many times, and I'm cutting my remarks short tonight on purpose. Just remember, the devil is in the details. False assumptions, beware of false assumptions. Now, it is well and good to have good nonprofit groups, some of them, but I think the reality has to come to the forefront in that this city, at this time, in this context, could not put one nickel, not one, right here, that was not debt, not one nickel. And that has to be recognized, gentlemen. The council previous to this council sweat, bled, and died to deal with the catastrophic situation this city was in financially. They have left a pathway that you, as stewards, can follow, and that pathway is already structured to help lead us back onto a more balanced and solid territory. We're not there yet. One misstep and we're dead in the water. And anybody who thinks that Cabela's Closing will not have an influence on this city is very ignorant. There is no cure for stupidity. My advice to you, at this time, in this context, knowing what I know, and I know some things you don't even know yet, my advice to you is, tell these nonprofits, listen, people, you're going to have to do the same thing the city of Bristol, Virginia has had to do. You're going to have to work very hard. You're going to have to cut back. You cannot and must not add any more taxes or any more fees to this citizenry, none, not one penny. And you're going to have to make it clear, in my opinion, to the nonprofits, you're going to have to do the same thing we have had to do. We can determine, we'll give you two years ahead, or three years ahead, or whatever, is going to be summed up in one word, no. No. We are trying to be good stewards for this city. We have hard-working citizens who are having a terribly difficult time. The city can't pay its bills. Things go from bad to worse. What is it, $80,000 a month for the jail? That wasn't even budgeted, I don't think. I mean, we're just up a creek, folks. Now, these people need to realize, yes, we want your help. We want you to do well, but you're going to have to realize that you're going to have to bite the bullet like the city has, and the answer for this year, and probably the next year or two, is no.
Thank you very much. All right. Item one on the regular agenda is a proclamation recognizing Bristol, Virginia Little League. Staff report.
Counsel, this proclamation is to recognize the Bristol, Virginia Little League as they have served the youth of Bristol, Virginia continually since 1950, so this year marks their 70th, 70th, 70th anniversary serving their youth here in the city of Bristol.
All right. So, the reading of the proclamation. Whereas Bristol, Virginia Little League has served the youth of Bristol, Virginia continually since 1950, whereas thousands of children who have become alumni of the Bristol, Virginia Little League since its founding have benefited from their experiences within the organization, among them Grammy-nominated singer-songwriter David Loggins, NFL quarterback Richard Todd, city council member and former mayor Kevin Mumpower, and World Series champion Justin Grimm. Whereas all members of the Bristol, Virginia Little League are exclusively volunteers, have devoted countless hours, days, and nights in the wind, rain, and heat to ensure that the youth of our city have the best opportunity to excel, not only in a team sport, but that they learn valuable life lessons. Whereas the volunteers past and present of the Bristol, Virginia Little League rate among the best persons that can be found in any community, among them being military veterans, police veterans, educators, firefighters, and elected officials. Whereas the Bristol, Virginia Little League stands as an organization devoted to bettering the outcome of the youth of this city by providing a place and activity to ensure that all children who come through their program receive positive influences toward their future. Therefore be resolved that Neil Osborne, mayor, and the city council of the city of Bristol, Virginia, do hereby recognize the contributions of the Bristol, Virginia Little League baseball to our community and congratulate them for their 70th year of service to the youth of the city of Bristol, Virginia. Looking for a motion and a second to adopt the proclamation.
Make a motion.
I'll second.
All right. So, a motion from Mr. Mumpower, and second from Mr. Hartley. Please call the roll.
Farnham.
Yes.
Mumpower.
Yes.
Wingard.
Yes.
Hartley.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes. All right. All right, we've got a couple of people in attendance to receive this proclamation. I believe Josh Slagel is here, and Rick Watts is here. So, come on down. Item two is a proclamation celebrating the 100th anniversary of the 19th Amendment. Staff report.
Counsel, this year, 2020, marks the 100th anniversary of the ratification of the 19th Amendment. The 19th Amendment allows women the right to vote, and tonight, we have with us members of the YWCA who will be presenting a short, 10-minute presentation here momentarily after the roll call for the reading of this proclamation to give a little presentation on the history of women's right to vote and suffrage in the United States.
All right, thank you. So, reading of the proclamation. Whereas Congress passed the 19th Amendment to the Constitution of the United States guided by the shared ideals of freedom, sovereignty, democracy, civil liberties, and individual rights, and whereas from 1919 to 1920, the 66th Congress debated and state legislatures considered an amendment to the Constitution to provide suffrage for women, and whereas on May 21st, 1919, the House of Representatives approved a proposed amendment, followed by the Senate a few weeks later on June 4th, 1919. And whereas the introduction, passage, and ultimate ratification of the 19th Amendments were the culmination of decades of work and struggle by advocates for the rights of women across the United States and worldwide, and whereas the ratification of the 19th Amendment ensured women could more fully participate in our democracy and fundamentally changed the role of women in the civic life of our nation, and whereas August 18th, 2020, marks the centennial of the ratification of the 19th Amendment by three-fourths of the states, providing the support necessary under Article 5 of the Constitution of the United States, and whereas August 26th, 2020, marks the centennial of the 19th Amendment becoming a part of the Constitution of the United States, providing for women's suffrage, and whereas the centennial anniversary of the ratification of the 19th Amendment represents an historical milestone to be lauded and celebrated. Now therefore be it resolved that the cities of Bristol, Tennessee, and Virginia, one, celebrate the 100th anniversary of the passage and ratification of the 19th Amendment providing for women's suffrage to the Constitution of the United States; two, honor the role of the ratification of the 19th Amendment in further promoting the core values of our democracy as promised by the Constitution of the United States; three, reaffirm the opportunity for people in the United States to learn about and commemorate the efforts of the women's suffrage movement and the role of women in our democracy; and four, reaffirm the desire of the cities to continue strengthening democratic participation and to inspire future generations to cherish and preserve the historic precedent established under the 19th Amendment. Margaret Fire Robin, mayor of Bristol, Tennessee, Neil Osborne, mayor of Bristol, Virginia. So, looking for a motion and a second to adopt the proclamation.
I move to approve.
Second.
All right. So, a motion to approve by Mr. Farnham, and second by Mr. Mumpower. Please call the roll.
Farnham.
Yes.
Mumpower.
Yes.
Wingard.
Yes.
Hartley.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes. All right. So, we have some folks here in attendance to receive the proclamation, and that's Ms. Kathy Waugh from the YWCA. And if you want to come up and give your presentation, I'll give you this paper.
And I have some others that are going to participate with me tonight, but I first would like to, on behalf of the YWCA and all the women of Bristol, Tennessee, and Virginia, thank you, Mayor Osborne, and the Bristol, Virginia City Council members for acknowledging the importance of the Suffrage Centennial here tonight. The 19th Amendment, as you have heard, really ensures that the right of citizens of the United States to vote shall not be denied or abridged in the United States or by any state on any account of sex. Thank you for kicking off our Twin Cities 2020 celebration with the presenting of this joint Bristol, Virginia and Tennessee proclamation. The proclamations will be publicly displayed all during 2020 at the YWCA on State Street and at the Bristol Public Library. So, the YW is proud to lead the community celebration that honors the hard-won success of those who worked tirelessly to ensure that women's voices were heard at the ballot box. The right to vote was a monumental step toward eliminating racism, empowering women, and the other values that are central to the YWCA's mission. Commemorative activities are being held all across the United States during 2020, and in particular here in our community, numerous organizations are planning historical, educational, and cultural arts events and different components. So, a key part of the local celebration will be to document the stories of local residents who were active in the suffrage movement. So, those with photos and articles and stories regarding the residents of Bristol and our surrounding communities who were instrumental in this movement are asked to bring their information so that a local collection can be developed, and you can contact us at the YWCA to be able to do that, be part of that collection. Other activities being planned include partnering with Believe in Bristol to organize a suffragist march during the Independence Day Parade, historical presentation at the Bristol Train Station, partnering with the Bristol Historical Association, wall art to be created on a building in downtown, educational displays at the Public Library, the DAR is planning a presentation with Stuart Harris, the host of Your Weekly Constitutional. So, we really see this as sort of a grassroots event and movement then, that organizations and associations throughout the city plan their events, and the YWCA will highlight a calendar on our website, which we've already started, so that as we, as events are planned and we're notified, you can access those, that calendar on the YWCA's website. In addition, let's see, I'm going to move forward, that's what I'm going to do. I'm going to introduce the YWCA Tech Girls, and they're going to be followed by a very important historical guest and a suffragist, Mrs. Jack Arnold. So, they're going to give us just a little bit of history of the 19th Amendment.
Girls, you want to start?
The first episode for women's suffrage was in 1848, when nearly 300 women and 40 men met in Seneca Falls, New York, to draw up the Declaration of Sentiments, which was the first American public protest against the political, economic, and social inequality of women. It was based on the language of the Declaration of Independence. We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men and women are created equal. Throughout the 1850s, numerous national women's rights conventions and meetings were held, making it a strong movement. With the outbreak of the Civil War, women suspended their activities on their own behalf and devoted energies to the noble purpose of freeing the slaves. Over the next 70 years, many bold and passionate women dedicated their lives to the suffrage movement. Major national and international organizations came on the scene. In 1858, the YWCA was founded to protect and support women's issues, including the suffrage movement and labor laws affecting women and children. On June 4th, 1919, the 66th Congress passed the 19th Amendment to the Constitution of the U.S. It was now in the hands of the 48 states that a required ratification be won in three-fourths of these states. In the spring and summer of 1920, it becomes clear that there are 35 sure states that will ratify the amendment. All attention now turned to Nashville, Tennessee. What a twist of fate, the southern state of Tennessee was the last hope of ratification for the 19th Amendment. The governor of Tennessee had to convene a special session for three weeks to ratify the so-called Susan B. Anthony Amendment. The amendment sailed through the state, but stalled in the House. On the morning of August 18th, 1920, Harry Byrne was wearing the red rose of the Antis. The vote was taken. It proves the tie, 48 to 48. Anti-suffragists now called for a vote on the amendment itself. When the clerk droning the roll call reached the name of Harry T. Byrne, there was a moment of hesitation. Then, in a clear voice, Harry called, "Aye." The tie was shattered. Tennessee's ratification of the 19th Amendment ran 27 million women the right to vote had passed.
I hope that we have time for a little more.
All right.
Okay. And members of council, and ladies and gentlemen, as you know, on this date, January the 14th, 1920, our country is abuzz with the talk of ratification of the proposed 19th Amendment. We are on the brink of an exciting and momentous occasion. If this amendment should pass and be ratified, women throughout the country could vote in their very first presidential election in 1920. Just so you understand, women in 1920 have under the law what is called disabilities. In most states, we are unable and not allowed to vote for federal offices. We cannot run or hold positions in elective, uh, federal positions. We cannot serve on jury duty. But my dear friends, perhaps we will not be second-class citizens any longer. It is an exciting year ahead. As you heard, the first episode for women's suffrage was in 1848. Susan B. Anthony joined the movement in 1851. Please absorb that date, 1848. Today is 1920. It will be a 72-year quest for women's voting rights. It is one of the great stories of American democracy, and one we hear very little about. Women's suffragists worked very hard, along with many men. They found they were not progressing like they wanted to do, so they decided to introduce an amendment, and you heard that amendment. In 1878, named for Susan B. Anthony, the 19th Amendment was introduced to Congress. It sat in Congress for 40 years. It was reintroduced into every succeeding Congress 21 times. Finally, President Woodrow Wilson came out in favor of the Susan B. Anthony Amendment, and in a speech to Congress, he said that women are vital to the war effort, vital to peace. June the 4th, 1919, the 66th Congress finally passed the 19th Amendment to the Constitution of the United States. But, there was not a celebration yet. It must be ratified. The suffrage had no fewer to pass than 36 of the 48 states. As spring came in 1920, there were 35 sure states that would ratify this amendment. But where was that 36th state? All eyes finally turned to the southern state of Tennessee. The governor, as you heard, did convene a special session. Our local area played a major role in that ratification. East Tennessee, Phoebe Byrne, a college-educated woman, lived in Niota, Tennessee, which is located between Knoxville and Chattanooga. Phoebe could not vote, yet some of her tenant farmers, who were illiterate, could vote. Her son, Harry, only 24, had served one term in the General House Legislature of Tennessee. He was the youngest member. He was aligned with the anti-suffragists. Phoebe said one morning after reading the bitter arguments of the anti-suffragists, she sat down on the porch and wrote a letter to Harry. Harry, now in Nashville, faced a dilemma as he read and reread his mother's letter, and I quote from this famous letter, "Dear son, I've been waiting to see how you should stood, but have not seen anything yet. Hurrah, and vote for suffrage. Don't keep them in doubt. Be a good boy and help Mrs. Cat put the rat in ratification." Unquote. Harry did break the tie. In August the 18th, 1920- In August the 18th, 1920, the ratification passed in Tennessee. Eight days later, it became part of the U.S. Constitution, perhaps all because of a mother's letter to her son. I close with a quote from a sculpture in Knoxville called the Tennessee Women's Suffrage Memorial. It says, "The young women of today, free to study, to speak, to write, to choose their occupation, should remember that every inch of this freedom was bought for them at a great price. The debt that each generation owes to the past, it must pay to the future." Thank you.
Thank you all. If y'all want to come down and get your proclamation.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
All right. Item three is consider Oak Street Bridge replacement staff report.
See, a year and a half ago, we, we closed the Oak Street Bridge because it was in a condition rating of poor, and we felt like the overall deterioration of the bridge just made it necessary to close it for the safety, public safety, for those reasons. But we, we've checked, VDOT has provided funding to replace that bridge on the order of about $3 million. It's in the state of good repair funding source. Uh, there's no city match required for it. We feel like we can address the concerns of the residents about the vagrants under the bridge by the way we construct it. We can, we can eliminate that place underneath that they kind of gather. The only other option we have is to remove the bridge. And, and the cost of removing the bridge is be, be about $250,000, but that's something we would have to pull out of the general fund. And so, uh, there's no outside funds available for the removal, but there are funds available to replace the bridge. And so we don't, you don't actually have to make a decision tonight. I just wanted to bring it before you. If you decide to, we certainly can, but maybe, you know, at least by next month, we'd need to make a decision so we can proceed forward. And letting VDOT know for sure that we're going after the funding, or we're going to keep the funding that's provided, and then we'll move forward with the design and everything on that. Do you have any questions?
I think you did. Do we have any questions?
You said next month, is that the deadline?
We don't have a, a specific deadline. The funding has been made available to us. It was available at least a year ago, and we just, they're asking us, are we going to use it? So we just need to let them know before it expires on us.
Before the bridge was closed, did we get an average daily traffic count?
It was very little.
In the time that it's been closed, have there been any complaints from any residents in the neighborhood about the traffic flow and having to take an alternate route?
I, I've had one gentleman that's called me several times wanting to know when we're going to replace the bridge.
And so the, the VDOT provided funds through the state of good repair, it'd be $3 million to replace the bridge, but it'd be $250,000 to remove it completely, but they won't pay for that.
That's correct.
Does that make sense?
That is typical government, that VDOT roads and bridges, the fuel taxes is what covers all the maintenance and repairs. They're willing to spend $3 million to give us a bridge we don't really need, but won't pay a penny to remove it. That is government at its finest.
It, it's, it's the way the funding was set up on it. We, we asked them to see if there was a way for them to, to work that out, and, and they, they just couldn't get that worked out. They are working with us on Piedmont Ave, on Piedmont Avenue to try to let us do that in pieces, uh, you know, a section at a time. The funding doesn't allow that, but they're going to change that rule to allow us to do that one. But this one, they just, they couldn't pull it together to get that change. They've been, we're very cooperative, though.
That's good that they're working with us on Piedmonts, but, um, what would, what would be your recommendation on this?
I'd say we go ahead and replace the bridge. We, we've talked to the homeowners in, on Solar Hill, or at least with, with Clyde Long, who's here. And, and, and we talked about their concern is the people that hang out underneath the bridge or gather there. And if we put lighting on the bridge, if we construct it a certain way, we can eliminate that place underneath the bridge where people sometimes sleep. We can do that with the construction of the bridge by moving the abutment out and just filling in that area that, that they gather, so that we'd eliminate that spot. And so it's easy to do, it'd be a real easy fix, and we can provide lighting. I think he would like us to, the neighborhood would like us to try to add some aesthetic features that fit with the neighborhood on, on the bridge, which we, we can certainly look into that and attempt to try to do that, so.
So the, this doesn't go through like the SMART scale or anything like that, doesn't get scored?
It's already approved. The funding is already approved. We, we held it off the last time we talked, because the neighborhood would have liked, wanted to get rid of it. Then we, we looked in the, uh, we looked at the options available to us to, to remove it, trying to get some things changed, and that just wasn't going to happen, so.
And then the, do we have to work with the railroad workers over there right away?
Uh, yeah, we have to work with them during the construction of it, sure.
Would, but they're not, would they be willing to help?
No, they, they'll, they'll work with us, yeah.
But they're not going to help?
They won't contribute, but they're...
Yeah, that's what, that's kind of where I was getting, they won't help fund...
Yeah, they won't, they won't fund it, but...
Okay.
But VDOT has provided that funding for us.
Well, I think we're going to get a new bridge just by default. We don't have a quarter of a million dollars.
Well, do we want to, do we want to take some action on this? You can, yeah, come on.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
My name is Clyde Long, I live on 116 Solar Street, that's, uh, up on Solar Hill. I'm near the Oak Street Bridge. And, you know, we originally had, uh, over 100 signatures, you know, requesting that the bridge not be rebuilt. And, uh, we, it's, it's not utilized that much. But, you know, we're in a circumstance, situation now where due to circumstances and state laws, it might be that, uh, there's no alternative but to rebuild the bridge. Uh, it would be my preference that, you know, it's not used that much, uh, over 100 people don't want it. I only know of one person that's, I didn't even know about that person that, that preferred it. The Oak Street Bridge has been there 100 years. It is a source of constant problems for the Bristol Police Department. I've talked to members of the Bristol Police Department. They're over there quite often dealing with criminal activity, drugs, paraphernalia of drugs under the bridge, people sleeping under the bridge. Someone was murdered under the bridge many years ago, so it's kind of a crime magnet. And so it's something that we really didn't need, uh, in our neighborhood anymore. And, um, it goes from Bristol, uh, Solar Historic District transitions to Euclid Avenue Historic District. So we got two historic districts, Bristol being the oldest neighborhood in Bristol, established in 1870, and the first neighborhood in Bristol. And so we have, we have people trying to restore the homes up there, and we're trying to keep, you know, a lot of unnecessary traffic passing through the neighborhood. And people would use the Oak Street Bridge just to get through the neighborhood, to go to the other side of town. And so it created a lot of unnecessary traffic. But state laws and circumstances are such that, you know, it, it may be that it has to be rebuilt. That's not our preference, but I think you're in a dilemma, and we understand that. There are, there are some concerns, uh, three primary concerns of the Bristol, of the citizens up on Solar Hill, and that is to design a bridge, uh, that will be designed in such a way that it won't be another 100 years of, 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 of a constant irritation and draw, and draw on the, um, funding sources for our Bristol Police Department. You know, they don't need to spend, I mean, they spend 100 years worrying about that and spending money sending people over there. We don't need to do that for another 100 years, you know? So if the bridge could be designed in such a way that the abutments prevent people from crawling under it, you know, you know, you know, sleeping under there, criminal activity was a meeting place under there, if it could be designed in such a way that, that would minimize or eliminate that, that would be helpful. The other, the other thing that would be helpful would be to have lighting for the bridge, maybe on the four corners, uh, uh, the, the, there is historic lighting up in Solar Hill. It would be nice if, as we go from one historic district to, that transitions to another historic district, that, that we try to keep the bridge aesthetically pleasing, we have lighting, which will also help minimize criminal activity. So, you know, you can go up on Solar Hill and see our beautiful streetlights up there, which now have, they, they've even brought that idea down to the downtown area. Now we have historic, vintage-looking streetlights, which are, which are very nice. And, uh, so that would be nice if we could have, you know, design the bridge to minimize criminal activity, have lighting on the bridge to, to, for, for, for safety as well as aesthetic purposes. And, and finally, if you go up there and look at the bridge now, the bridge is built in such a way, and they did that back then, where it's fairly aesthetically pleasing. Uh, they have a series of columns on it, they have ornamental squares impregnated into the side of the concrete. So it looks a little bit like Mary Street Bridge, which is, you know, aesthetically pleasing. Unfortunately, when they build bridges back these days, they, they, um, they, they just throw them up there, they look like ugly concrete bridges. Since, since Bristol, since Solar Hill Historic District and Euclid Avenue Historic District are connected by this bridge, it would really be nice if, if, if we have to rebuild the bridge, is to do it in an aesthetically pleasing manner that's consistent with those two historic districts of Bristol. I know you all are in dilemma, in, in the cities in the dilemma, but if, if you all could consider those considerations in Department of Public Works, if we could, if you all could consider that, we'd be grateful. So anyway, that's the only comment I have. Y'all, if you'll have any questions about, from me, about the bridge, about the bridge and how the people feel up there?
I was just going to say thank you for coming to speak tonight. Um, did, do you think there was any negative, any neighbors that you've spoken with when the bridge closed, uh, with, regarding traffic and getting to a certain part of the city?
Most, most people were very, very, that I talked to, I, I, I didn't talk to, uh, really hardly anybody. There, there may have been one or two people that may have walked across the bridge and, and walked their dogs across the bridge. But no one, no one has come to me and said that they missed the bridge, they, they actually prefer the bridge not to be there, because it, there's a, there's a lot of dramatic, um, increase in traffic with that bridge. People come off Euclid Avenue, Solar, uh, Euclid Avenue Historic District, and they drive down over the bridge going 45 or 50 miles an hour, and they just fly through there because they're, they're trying to cut 10 seconds off their trip from one side of town to another. They don't live there, they don't really do, have any business up on Solar Hill to, to conduct. They just want to get from one part of town to another a little bit faster, and it, it creates a lot more traffic up there in our, in our nice neighborhood that we don't, we don't, we, we prefer not to have, but, uh, you know, I, I'm not sure what can be done about that. So no one really wants it. There is one individual that, but last year, we, we had many citizens come down, uh, a year and a half ago, and say that they would prefer not to have it rebuilt. We had over 100 signatures asking that it not be rebuilt. Uh, not one person showed up asking that it be rebuilt, not one person signed a petition asking it to be rebuilt. So that, that's the history of it. The situation is such that I, I don't know what the answer is, and, uh, we leave it to y'all's good judgment to, once you know the facts, and hopefully you can consider if it is your decision to rebuild the bridge, that, that, if you would please consider these points in this reconstruction.
I just had one more question, and that was, um, I already know fire trucks are not supposed to go across Piedmont. Uh, when we closed the bridge, do we know if that affected, uh, response times with the fire department in any way?
They, they weren't using the bridge anyway, because it was, the, the rating was so poor, they couldn't cross it.
Like, okay.
Would, would they be able to if it was rebuilt?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
I, I would just want to add one, one quick thing, this, this is an idea, uh, don't know if it's feasible, but, you know, Strongwell got involved where there was a bridge down in the Caribbean that was a very historical, 250-year-old bridge that no one could rebuild and had very unique architectural features to it. And they, they designed and made the entire bridge out of Strongwell material. And, and you ought to see that bridge, it's phenomenal. Same color, it had a color matching, so it was a very unique green. And so if you, um, I'd say go talk to John Tickle, go talk to Strongwell. If you want to make some architectural adjustments to the design where you can limit the cost of just the, the concrete bridge, but still make it look nice, you know, they might have a, a way to do that for you, right?
Sure.
You know, my, my thought is if, if we could stay within budget and build that bridge to, to reflect the historic neighborhoods on either side of it, uh, and, you know, that, that would be, would really be, mean a lot to the citizens up there, is to try to keep it consistent with, and, you know, it, it may be that, um, it, it, it wouldn't cost more than, it could stay within the budget, you know? If, if it just, if it's planned ahead of time, you know, that...
Well, their materials are a lot cheaper than typical bridge construction materials, and they last three times as long.
One of the things we did, uh, when we, uh, when we redid our neighborhood upstairs, sidewalks, we, we redid all, we did all our sidewalks, got historic lighting up there, you can drive up there. And once we did that, our neighborhood has really picked up a lot, you know, we have a lot of people restoring homes up there. Uh, we, we really were, the citizens up there were very interested in the details. For example, back then, they used river sand to, to make, to, as, as the sand in the sidewalks, and, and that was used almost universally. River sand, you know, creates a very aesthetically appealing color to the sidewalk. It's kind of a buff tan color. Mary, Mary Street Bridge is that color, I mean, yeah, Mary Street Bridge is that color, so is Oak Street Bridge. It has kind of a buff tan color to it. Sidewalks have that. Nowadays, they use white sand, and, and the sidewalks aren't particularly pretty. And, uh, it's not, it's a small detail, but it, it's just planning ahead. If you plan to use river sand, you can have the, you know, sidewalks that, you know, that are historically, uh, reflect the times. And, and back then, they thought about aesthetics. They thought about, that even their little bridge is that tiny little Oak Street Bridge. If you happen to have a chance to go up there and, and look at it, it's, it's very aesthetically pleasing the way they designed it, uh, Mary Street Bridge too, but they don't do that anymore, and, and it's unfortunate. But because we have two historic neighborhoods joined together by this little bridge, I think that's not an unreasonable request.
All right, thank you very much. I, I will say, um, to Mr. Mount Power's point, I've been down to Strongwell, and I've seen that bridge you're talking about, that, it does look really nice, they do some good quality work. So if, if we do this, if, if this does pass, and I think it'd be good to see what we can do to make it fit the neighborhood and make it look nice. And if done well, I think it really could be just a, just a nice, you know, bright spot for the neighborhood, and, and we can, we can address the issues with, with people living under it and stuff too, and at the same time, so, so appreciate your work. So do we want to take action on this?
Before we do, ask Mr. McCullough, do you think you can address the concerns?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yeah, yeah, there, the, um, people hanging out under the bridge, that can be eliminated just with the abutments. And I think we can try to get a, um, an aesthetic look to the bridge, try to add some features to it. I think we can probably get that done within the budget. And then the lighting, that's not a serious issue either, we can address that as well.
Did you also, I know you mentioned people coming from the, I guess, Park Street side that way, over into Euclid Avenue, coming down the hill? Maybe put a speed bump right before you get...
Uh, yeah, we could, we...
To try to slow people?
What, what, what we can do is once it gets, gets constructed and is in use, we can, um, put some traffic counters out there just to check the speed and see. If it, if it's a problem, then we can address that, yes.
I'd like to know, and I know he's not here tonight, but if we could ask the fire chief if a new bridge was rebuilt and a fire truck... chief if a new bridge was rebuilt and a fire truck could now go across it, would that improve response times in the neighborhood?
I can find out. I mean, my assumption would be that it would, would improve response times depending on which station was going to the neighborhood.
All right, folks, what do we want to do here?
I'll make a motion for a new bridge.
I second it. All right, so motion from Mr. Wingard and second from Mr. Mumpower. Is there any further discussion? The clerk will call the roll, please.
Farnham?
Yes.
Mumpower?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Hartley?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
All right. We get us a new bridge. Item four, Boyce Cox Field Contract for Bleacher Replacement Staff Report.
Okay, so, so we went, as you may be aware, the existing bleachers behind, at the back, behind home plate and behind first base had deteriorated such that they were unsafe, so those were both removed. And so we got prices to put aluminum bleachers up. They would be, they would be able to house, let me see, or seat about three, a little over three hundred people in each, each set. Home plate, three hundred there and three hundred at first base. And so we got bids to do this, and the bids ranged from sixty-seven thousand up to eighty-eight thousand. And so the low bid was with Bleachers International. I checked with, checked some of the references on people that had used them and everybody was satisfied with them. The school board, or the Virginia Public Schools, well, Bristol, Virginia, will pay for half the cost of the bleachers. And so we'll split the cost evenly with them. We'll have to construct a concrete foundation for them to set the bleachers on, but the contract is for them to come install it. It includes a five-year guarantee with it. So I guess, yeah, I'm just looking to you guys to approve the contract.
All right, thank you very much. So looking for a motion and a second to proceed on this.
A move that we proceed with replacing the bleachers.
Second.
Okay, so motion from the Vice Mayor and second from Mr. Farnham. Council discussion.
Ask Mr. McCollough a couple of questions. So you have to pour a foundation out there and they're oil and stone?
It's basically, the foundation that's there, all we have to do is pour like a four-inch slab over top of what's there.
Okay.
Just to set it on. So it just needs to be a level spot the size of the bleachers.
Have you torn down the bleachers behind home yet?
Yes.
Okay. And I know first base was during the summer, during the, but I didn't know if after...
The concrete bleachers were...
Yeah, the con, that's the ones...
Yeah, yeah, the folding bleachers are still in place.
And will they be able, having to pour some concrete and it being winter, will you be able to get everything done before the start of Virginia High's baseball season?
It may be, we're gonna push them to try to get it done by the end of March, but that's gonna be, that's what we're working with them on. The lead time to try to get everything done, we've crunched it up a little bit, so it, I can't guarantee it. We're gonna certainly try to do that.
It needs to be a certain temperature to pour concrete.
Yeah, I don't think that's gonna be the issue. The issue's gonna be more them getting the material fabricated and delivered and then put together.
So I know when they took out, when we took out the first base bleachers this past year, the Pirates added in a little bit of like table sitting and stuff like that. Is there gonna be room for that at this point?
No. That, yeah, those bleachers would be elevated about three feet, and so there wouldn't really be any room for something like that.
Well, I guess my question is, this concrete slab has to have a four-inch cap foot on it, are we gonna do the whole entire slab, four inches thick?
Yes.
How, how, what, how many square footage is this? Because I'm thinking if it's a one, I'm thinking it's quite a bit.
Sixty by fifteen, it's not, it's not gonna be a huge amount in terms of cost.
Okay, is it necessary to pour the, a solid slab instead of just pouring where the supports, where the bleachers are gonna be and save all the concrete in between?
You could do that, I'm not sure, forming that up, you're gonna, that's gonna take some time just to form it, whereas if you just poured the whole slab, it's easier to keep clean because then you can go underneath and just sweep it as opposed to having areas of gravel or whatever that you have to, you can't, it's difficult to get the trash up below that. So I think it, it works better if it's one solid slab.
I'd like to know what the cost difference is on that, because, I mean, concrete's a hundred and forty dollars a yard.
The concrete costs roughly sixteen hundred and sixty-six dollars. The forming, depending on, and I don't know how many individual pads you would have to pour, I haven't seen the actual design of what the footers, for the footing with bleachers would be like. My assumption would be there would be at least three rows of foot pads that you would have to pour so that you could, so that they could sit on it. But we haven't seen the design, the specific design for the footing yet. I think we sent them the, did we send them a CAD drawing of exactly where everything had to be?
We just sent them an aerial and we gave them some general dimensions.
So, we, but we haven't seen the exact sign of, I can't...
Typically, they do put just a solid slab, and again, I think that's for cleanup, you know, after games, it's just so much easier to be able to clean it up underneath. And, but we can look at it and see if there's a savings.
And the total cost is sixteen?
Sixteen sixties. Sixteen hundred and sixty-six dollars for the concrete.
Okay, so we ain't talking no real money. We ain't, we ain't talking...
Pennies add up to dollars.
I know they do, but you're gonna have time in forming up the, so there's gonna be an offset there.
Right.
All right. I just needed to know how big the pad was, because if it was a huge pad, it would add up to be a lot of money.
No, you're absolutely right.
And that sixteen sixty-six is for one pad, not two pads, so you're looking at roughly thirty-three hundred dollars for both pads.
The, and so on the first base side, do you have to elevate that to...
Yes, they're elevated three feet above ground.
Yeah, I was gonna say, the other, you stepped up to kind of be even with the top of the dugout.
Yes.
The seats that were there before, so...
Yeah.
I, I think it's just important to mention that this was not originally budgeted for, but we're not just doing this just because we want to, it was a safety issue. The old ones were deemed poor, and my understanding is when we took them down, they came down pretty easily, actually.
Too easy.
Mr. Superintendent, do you know the date of the first home Bearcat baseball game?
I mean, I don't know the exact date, it was in late March.
All right, pressure's on.
All right, is there any further discussion? If there is not, will the clerk please call the roll?
Farnham?
Yes.
Mumpower?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Hartley?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Item five is update on school ADA projects from Dr. Perrigen.
Mr. Mayor, members of City Council, thanks for giving me an opportunity to share with you tonight. Actually, the previous topic is a good segue. Let me first say that Mr. Eads did try to get the school board to pay a significant amount more towards those bleachers, but I was able to negotiate that down with him a little bit, so he is working on your behalf, I can assure you.
I tried tricking him, but he caught me.
So, and I'll also say, in regards to the projects that we have going on at our, at our elementary schools, Wallace mentioned something, the lead time on materials. So we are, we have currently, we finished the vestibule project at Van Pelt, we have finished the restroom project at Highland View, and we are waiting on the steel for the vestibule at Highland View. We went by the steel plant today that, which is right there off of, beside Shakesville Road, and they hope to have that ready, to us, ready to install at Highland View on Monday. The next vestibule will go in at Stonewall Jackson to be followed by a vestibule at Washington Lee. So I wanted to come to you tonight and talk to you about the status of our ADA restrooms. Since this initial, this additional funding was approved, there has been a change in our, in our forward focus for elementary schools, that being the approval of building a new elementary school. And I'm not making this suggestion, but I just want to be a good steward of the additional funding that City Council has made available to us and ask you your preference on whether or not that we do follow through with the renovating of the restrooms at the remaining school. If all goes as planned, the new school would open the following, not next school year, but the following, and so we would be making those renovations on the restrooms and only getting, you know, one year's use out of those. That's certainly, you know, worth the effort to do that. The safety vestibules, absolutely, that's, that's not a question. We're moving forward with that because every day that we can make our kids safer is a better day for the city of Bristol. But just wanted your input, since it is your additional funding that is being provided, and we want to be a good steward of the money that you provide, is your recommendation on how we move forward with the remainder of the restrooms?
So let me ask you a question here. So, let me ask about the vestibule first, I know we're talking about the bathrooms, let me ask about the vestibule first. So you said you're waiting for the steel for the vestibule, vestibule at Highland View, and you might have it Monday?
We should have it ready to install by Monday.
So how long, once you start installing it, does it take for you to finish installing it?
It's, it's about, with paint and everything, usually, it's, Van Pelt took two weeks total work time. However, we were also delayed in getting the bulletproof glass for that vestibule as well. So we had the frame up, we had the frame painted, but we were, we were waiting for bulletproof glass to complete that project. So it, even though it took about two weeks' worth of labor, it didn't, it took longer than that to finish the project as we were waiting for materials.
Do you have the glass for the Highland View vestibule?
I, I do not know the answer to that. I did instruct our maintenance director to order that earlier this time to make sure that we didn't have that lag time, but I don't know, I don't know the answer to that question.
And so which bathrooms are you, are you done with? I know you said Highland View.
Yeah, we're, the Highland View restrooms are complete. We have not started the, since the approval in early December, we've not made any additional movement towards the restrooms at Stonewall Jackson or at Washington Lee, wanting direction from you. Obviously, if that, I'm not suggesting that we not do that, however, also, we, I mean, this is additional funding, so we want your input on how we move forward.
And so you said that if everything goes on timeline like it should with the new elementary school, it would open in August of twenty-two?
Yes, sir.
So, I mean, what I would, you know, I'm just one person up here, but what I would think is, I mean, the problems with the bathrooms have been there for twenty years, thirty years, so, I mean, you know, and we've already appropriated you the money, and I assume you don't want to just give it back to us.
We, we don't want to, we don't want to take money that we don't need. Obviously, if you'll let us keep it, we will, but I'm not suggesting that we not build the restrooms and keep the money, that's not what I'm suggesting.
Yeah, I mean, if we've given you the money to, you know, just to paint something or whatever, I'd say, you know, hold off if you're gonna build a new school. But I mean, in my opinion, if the bathrooms have been a problem already, I mean, I would, I would say go ahead and fix them, because, you know, I wouldn't, I wouldn't tell some kid who can't go to the bathroom at their school, wait another year or two and you'll be able to go at your new school, you know?
That's, I, I agree with that, I don't have any issue. I just, things have changed since the money was allocated, I just want to, you know, normally, your normal appropriation that you give to us, I mean, we spend that as we see fit. This is an additional appropriation that was approved after the budget, and so just in good faith, I wanted to come and get your, your input and opinion about that.
Well, you need to stop the new school because this community doesn't want it. That's what you need to do.
So I will tell you, that's not been the reception I've received in the public, but and I will also tell you that just because the public don't want, if, some members of the public don't want us to be in compliance with the American with Disabilities, that doesn't mean we have the legal authority to do it.
Should've fixed that in nineteen ninety-one when it was passed, stop using the excuse.
I wasn't here in nineteen ninety-one.
You're responsible for thirty years, could've already had it done by now.
The, I know you mentioned the vestibule plan next for Highland View, what would the timeline be like for vestibules for the other buildings?
We, the Stonewall Jackson will be the next, and construction on those will begin as soon as they deliver the Highland View vestibule. Washington Lee, now that the new school is planned, there is, since it's gonna be a short-term fix there, we're suggesting a modification to that plan, which would not take as, as much steel work, and we could make that work for, for one year and still provide a safe environment. It wouldn't be as convenient, but it will be just as safe. So we're looking at that alternative.
I don't want to wait on anything for school safety.
Absolutely.
So I'll ask the question, we've talked a lot about our elementary schools, is there any vestibule, vestibule-type things that could be done or needed or could be improved at the middle and high schools?
So we have a plan for Virginia High School as far as adding a safety vestibule there. The, that would be in the next, next year's budget that we would try to make that happen. We do not have a plan for doing a vestibule at Virginia Middle School. As you know, if you go into the main entrance at Virginia Middle School, it's like a split four-year home. I mean, you walk into the main entrance and you can go either, you can either go up or down, and the office is at the next floor up. And so we're, we're looking at some alternatives of where, maybe even moving the office from its location and moving it to another part of the building where we could provide a safer, a safety vestibule there. But currently, the way that school is designed, it makes it very difficult to create a safety vestibule. I will tell you that other localities have come to look at the Van Pelt vestibule and are gonna mimic that. It is, many school divisions in our area are really impressed with the added safety features that it has, you know. For us, it's a triple, we're adding three different barriers because we moved the location of the office and then we added two additional barriers for folks to get into the building. And so it is maybe the best safety investment that we've made in our schools in a good while.
You said something that caught my attention.
Yes, sir.
That the vestibules have safety proof glass, I mean, bulletproof glass.
Yes, sir.
Who's tested that? You got two holes in the glass right now.
And where's that?
On the main walk going into the building, they're on the top left-hand corner.
Yeah, that, right, that glass, the interior glass is the glass with, that's bulletproof.
I was up there last week with the basketball, with grandson playing basketball, and I thought, man, really? All this money and we already got two bullet holes in it?
Yeah.
And with that being said, do we not have cameras?
We do.
I'd like to find out who shot, shot the school.
Okay.
I mean, that's ridiculous.
Yeah.
I mean, we're building vegetables and somebody's done got two bullet holes in the front glass?
Yeah, I, I don't think that those have occurred since the vestibule has been, has been built.
So that outside exterior glass is original, was not replaced?
No, that glass has not been replaced. That is where folks enter and wait to be screened before they get into the school. And so the bulletproof glass protects going into the school building, not going into the vestibule.
Okay.
But you're right, those, those look like little BB holes, I wouldn't imagine...
It looks like a pellet gun or something.
Yeah, pellet gun or something like that. Those act, need to be fixed, but, you know, we, when we started this, we had over three hundred maintenance work orders that needed to be taken care of in our schools. And so from a priority standpoint, you know, BB holes in a glass are obviously need to be fixed, but they're not, they're not the top of our list currently. We, I will say, big thanks to City Council for providing the funding for the two additional positions, because as we've been waiting on supplies for the vestibules, we didn't just let those, the two additional positions sit around, we've put those on the work orders. And so I can tell you that where we were at three, over three hundred work orders, we're down to below ninety now. So we've, we've hit a big lick on knocking some of the work orders off of our list, and we're very grateful to City Council for providing that funding.
Okay. And out of the money you was allocated for all the ADA and vestibules, how much has already been spent?
I don't, I don't have that number.
Okay. I wanted to take a tour today and go look and see what had already been done, but due to circumstances, I couldn't.
Sure.
I would like to arrange for a tour.
Yeah, I had our principals ready, they were ready, and our, one of our maintenance staff was ready to take you around, but we just, we didn't hear back from you. But yeah, that's, that's fine, welcome anytime. You can go by anytime, but if you want a tour and an explanation, just give us time to get that scheduled, and we'll get Chad to be there with you.
Okay. How long does it take to do the restrooms? I know, I know the one at Highland View seemed to go very quickly once it got started.
Right. Yeah, so I think Stonewall Jackson's restrooms will go very quickly. They are partially handicap accessible, they have, they have like a rail in one of the restrooms, but the, for example, on that one, the toilet is not the correct number of inches away from the wall. So, you know, we'll move the toilet there, add the rails at the right height, get the sinks to the right height, get the, you know, the light fixture switches to the right height, so Stonewall will go much quicker. Washington Lee is a little more difficult, because even the doorways that go into those restrooms are gonna provide some accessibility issues, just, just the way those restroom doors were built, so, they'll go quickly, I just, again, I'm not suggesting that we don't do those, things have changed since you provided the appropriation.
And I understand, but I, I would make those a priority, I mean, it's not, I think this, Councilman Mumpower said, it's been thirty years since those should've been done, we, we gave you the money, I was hopeful that originally, I, I think you had followed, of course, you ran into some issues with bidding and stuff, that this would all be done by Christmas break.
Right.
So, you know, those kids have waited long enough, they don't need to, I see no reason to, to tell kids in two schools, just because they shouldn't wait, and especially should something happen and the project get delayed or run behind, then you may be there longer than you think, so I think this is the, the least we can do.
So noted, and, but I will say, we don't have any students who need the accessibility at those schools currently. We did have one student at Highland View who we had to transfer to Van Pelt in the process, but now that Highland View is up and running, all that's taken care of, so we, we currently do not have student needs for that. We do have employee needs and potential for, you know, that, but yeah, we'll, absolutely, so noted.
You don't know what your needs would be in that area, I mean, so.
Do we have anything else? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we have one person who signed up for comment on it, and that is Ms. Barney.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, my name is Nancy Barney, I'm a resident of the city of Bristol, Virginia, I'm a property owner, I pay my taxes. I'm very interested in this particular issue of safety. I went up last year to see one of the girls' basketball games, I was very interested in watching them play in, it was one of the tournaments they played in up there, and I ran into a problem which I brought to the attention of various unsungary people who seem to be in some capacity of in charge up there, I, I don't know about that, but nonetheless, this was the issue. There are no handrails to hold on to if you wanna walk up the steps and go up higher in the seats, there's not a single handrail in there. Now, I remember several years ago, I got a number of telephone calls from people complaining about the football stadium, the Virginia High Football Stadium had the same problem, there were no handrails to hang on to to walk up higher and higher, and people were complaining all over the place, and I was getting phone calls along with the councilman and everybody else. Well, now that has been corrected, and they do have the handrails now, as they should, but that gymnasium at the Virginia High School, and I said, I'm not going back in there, because when I came out, I was almost deaf, the music, which was absolutely abominable, was too loud, you could hear it six miles up the road, it was just awful, but nonetheless, it was way too loud, and secondly, I ended up sitting on the second row, because quite frankly, I was afraid to even try to go up any higher, and so I just sat where there was a seat, and I thought, you know, there are people who have children and grandchildren and nieces and nephews and neighbors and just people like me who go because I'm interested in the program, and I thought, there ought to be some way to, to correct this, and the only way to do it is put the handrails up through there. So this is my suggestion, based on my personal experience, and I'm not going back in there again till there's something for me to hold on to, and I don't think I'm the only person, they have graduation in there, there are all kinds of stuff, tournaments and God knows what else, and it's a safety factor, it's a safety factor. So my suggestion is that there be a handrail put going right straight up the middle of those steps, and that I think would be a great safety help, a very great safety help, and you don't have to be older to use that, young people fall too, maybe not as much, but they fall. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. All right, item six is the discussion of fiscal year 2021 budget calendar.
Counsel, just in a few moments, I'll be presenting the budget calendar for you to review. However, before we get into that budget calendar, I wanna make a few comments. This will be my fourth budget season with the city of Bristol. My first budget season, I sat over here and watched the budget unfold as city attorney, and this year will mark my third budget season as city manager. I know this is an election year, and politicians like to score political points with the electorate. Developing and implementing the budget is more than politics. Decisions made this year will have a substantial impact on the future of this city, and it's important for each of you to remember, and anyone that's considering your run for council, what those substantial impacts will mean for this city's future. Furthermore, it's also important for each of you to remember that this council and this management staff have implemented financial policies and procedures which have had a positive impact on the city's financial situation. In fiscal year sixteen and seventeen, the city borrowed one point seven million dollars in order to pay operational expenses. As of June thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen, the city had roughly nineteen million dollars cash on hand, a twenty-one million dollar swing. A lot of this cash is reserved for various means, but the reason we got here is simply based on we implemented policies and plans, and we stuck to those policies and plans, and because of that, we're in a much better position today than we were in the spring of two thousand and seventeen. Many people doubted we would be able to do what we have done. We have increased our cash balances, increased our credit rating, and have a plan in place to deal with the increased debt service. As we progress through this budget season, let's remember we are all on one team. We all want the same goal for this city, and that goal is for this city to prosper and succeed. I recognize we all have different visions and how we should accomplish these goals, but this is not the year to let political ideologies guide the budget process. We must be rational and pragmatic when we make financial decisions. We must treat one another with respect that we all deserve, and we must be willing to listen to each others', each person's concerns and come to well-reasoned solutions and compromises. Finally, as a council, part of your responsibility is, to the electorate, to the electorate is to have budget goals for the city. I would respectfully ask that each of you send me up to ten budget goals by the close of business on Friday, January the twenty-fourth, so that as we go through the development bu, budget process, we can incorporate your goals for the city in this budget process. So now let's take a look at the budget calendar. The first budget workshops are, have already, or the work papers were sent to the departments on December thirty-first, outside of agency applications are due on January thirty-first, internal department management meetings will begin in February, budget development occurs throughout February and March. Our first budget workshop will be on March the second of two thousand and twenty, we will be discussing revenues on, on that day. Our second budget workshop will be March the ninth, then the Bristol, Virginia Public Schools outside agency presentations will be on March the tenth, we'll have another budget workshop on March the twenty-first, then on April the seventh, we will have the tax rate resolution, which we do not anticipate increasing taxes this year, and the budget presentation on April the seventh. It's important to note that the treasurer would like to have that tax rate resolution passed on April the seventh, so that they can go ahead and start the tax tickets and get those out, and give folks plenty of time to make those payments, which are due on June the fifth. On April the twenty-eighth, we'll have a public hearing on the appropriation ordinance, and then on May the twelfth, we will have the first reading of the budget ordinance. May the twenty-sixth, we'll have the second reading of the budget ordinance and the adoption of the budget that night. All of these meetings will begin at six PM, if it's on a weekday, and if it's on a Saturday, they begin, can't see the bottom, I think we said eight-thirty or nine, I'm sorry, nine o'clock. We have followed the same calendar that we have followed for the past, or at least for last year, the only thing we did was just update the dates so that, it looks like we may be behind there, it looks like two thousand and nineteen, we didn't update some of the dates, but, the, it is the same flow as what we had last year in regards to the budget process. I, I want each of y'all to kinda take a look at this, study it over the next week or so, make sure you don't have any family vacations or anything that will interfere with these dates, let me know if you do, so that we can accommodate that, and we can always schedule more workshops as needed, or get rid of workshops as needed as well. Any questions?
The tax rate, that's a resolution, not an ordinance?
That's correct.
Okay, so we can do that, cause that's, I didn't know if it required a second reading, but...
No, it's always been the re... It'll put in the budget.
But we go ahead and do that resolution?
Do that so that she can send out the...
So that she can get the bills in process, the final tax rate does appear in the final appropriation ordinance.
Now, that, that's good, I know she's commented, and, and we've seen that that's helped to get that set earlier rather than later, so.
Any other questions? Comments? All right, thanks.
Thank you very much. All right, on to the consent agenda, what do we wanna do on this?
I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
All right, motion by Mr. Hartley and second by Mr. Farnham, is there any discussion? Hearing none, if the clerk would call the roll, please.
Farnham.
Yes.
Mumpower.
Yes.
Wingard.
Yes.
Hartley.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes, we stand adjourned.